I will call the March 11th Board of Trustees of Riverside Township Meeting to order. Please rise and trustee Heilinbach, would you please come here for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Heilinbach.
Present.
Trustee DeCostela.
Present.
Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Clerk Reyes is here, Supervisor Wilt.
And trustee Clark has asked to be excused for illness. Thank you. We have a quorum, so we will move on to the first item, which is the approval of minutes of the February 11th meeting. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for February 11th, 2025.
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee DeCostela, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the minutes of February 11th. Are there any additions, corrections, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
I abstain, Supervisor Wilt, I wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you. Duly noted. Okay, are there any communications?
We have one communication from the township officials of Illinois, drawing the board's attention to a legislative alert that I believe the board is familiar with.
Right, the board has it all in their, in their finders.
I had to reach out and made commentary to the office of the speaker directly.
Thank you very much.
And I have reached out also.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It won't be the last you'll hear of it, I'm sure. If there's no other communications, then let us move on. Next is the supervisor's report. I did have a flurry of new requests for assistance since our last meeting, so we have two new GA clients and several emergency assistance applications out. One of those applicants brought the paperwork today and another is scheduled to come in Friday, and so we're, we're busy on that front. The food pantry will get some boosts soon as Hauser's annual food drive is going on right now, so if your neighbor kids approach you, please be generous. I was at their kickoff on the last Friday in February, and the drive runs the first three weeks in March. We are one of four pantries they supply from their collection. One of the representatives of another pantry said he might be able to get us some new sources for our food, so I am looking forward to connecting with him again. Meanwhile, the Riverside Foods and Riverside Bank will be collaborating on a program that should bring us some more contributions as well. To our elected officials, you should have recently received a notice from the county clerk to file your statement of economic interest. Please remember to do this sooner than later. Don't wait until the deadline is upon you. Another request comes from township officials of Illinois regarding the latest movement to eliminate townships. As was mentioned, the first, first, the governor put forth the proposal in his budget presentation, and that was followed up by legislation proposing elimination of townships with under 5,000 residents. We are only at 15,500, so we could be next. That is why we have a resolution for approval tonight and one why we are asked to contact legislators to object to the consolidation and elimination of townships, when there's no evidence to show that these services could be delivered any more economically or efficiently by any other branches of government. Earlier today, I met with architect Marty Serena and his son, recommended by trustee Clark, to discuss future improvements to our town hall. This firm is very environmentally friendly, and they understand older buildings with challenges like ours. They have worked with many older churches and similar buildings to preserve the integrity of the structures responsibly. This was just an opening conversation, but they seem to understand our situation. They toured the building with me, and I expect to get kind of a, an overview of where, where they think we should, should be considering our next moves. The annual town meeting will be at 6:01 on April 8th, the same night as our regular meeting next month. No proposals or requests came in to be placed on the agenda by the deadline of March 1st, so the agenda for this year's meeting will be very basic and mostly just presentation of reports. We have had numerous inquiries about when our next shred event will be held, so people must be in spring cleaning mode. As a reminder, that date will be May 17th from 9 to 12. I have given you, the board members, another update, updated but imperfect version of the proposed budget, as I was pleasantly surprised by receipt of substantial tax revenue last week. We received the largest single day deposit I am ever aware of, of over $245,000 in one day. It came in during March, so it didn't make the financial report in your binders. We have, right now, exceeded the taxes we budgeted for 2025 by 131,000. So, we will finish the year with more cash on hand than anticipated, which in turn changes the next budget, and I'll be setting aside more funds toward building needs, so.
Excellent.
So, you know, I, I keep tweaking this day to day until the end of the budget year, but we should be in pretty good shape, although if, if the first thing we need to do is the roof, we're still gonna need to find grants or something, so. That's all I have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if any of you have them.
Two questions, if I may, please.
Sure.
The first one was, how is our food pantry's supply?
Our supply is pretty good right now. There are certain things that we still have a good supply from the Christmas donations through Riverside Foods. We also anticipate within the next two, three weeks, we will be getting things through Hauser.
Okay.
And then, um...
That's usually a pretty good...
That's usually a pretty good haul, and they also, they bring us the canned goods, and then, anything that they get in financial assistance, they then buy throughout the year, and one club comes each month to, to bring that in.
Okay.
There are certain things that we always run out of quickly because they're hard to buy in quantity and so forth, but it's pretty good, and the other thing is that every time we mention it like this, we do get some more donations, so.
What is, what are some of the high interest items that are hard to get, just out of curiosity?
Just, we go through them really quickly, things like peanut butter and jelly.
Okay.
A lot of our proteins, you know, it just, certain things fly off quickly, and fruit is sometimes hard to, you know, we try to...
Unless it's canned or something.
Right, right, so we do, we, we don't do anything that isn't shelf-stable.
Because we can focus, Jack Carroll is at Hauser doing the food drive, but we can
Focus it.
Ask, like, if there's a, if there's like a hot list, like...
The hard one for me to pick up is cereal, because it takes up so much room in the car, and, you know, and it really, and it flies off the shelf then, because, you know, those are big and bulky, but all of the things that we, you know, we do proteins, vegetables, starches, sauces, fruit, you know, there's breakfast foods, we do every kind of protein we can think of that people will actually eat, so.
What about paper goods?
Paper goods, tho- those are bonuses, that we typically put on the shelves for people to take as they need them.
Okay.
Because it just takes up too much of the room in the, in the food.
Sure. I have one more...
Sure.
Comment and question, please. My comment is, thank you very much for meeting with the architect, getting the ball rolling on our building. Was there any, do they handle grants at all, or...
They have worked with organizations that do them, and they, so they are familiar with what would be sought, but they don't actually do the...
They don't do the writing or anything?
No. But I had the sense that they might be able to connect us with some people who are grant writers and who are more familiar. The other thing is, I was surprised to hear they also have a construction branch of their company.
Okay.
So, they could, you know, watch the things go also, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, just, like I said, it was a first introduction.
Sure, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, then the assessor is here. We'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, everyone. Fran Sidkowitz, the township assessor, and here to report on what's going on in our office. We were just notified this week by the Cook County Assessor's Office that Riverside Township is open for appeals, so will be open for appeals through April 18th. We're just getting prepared to get out a, an email about that in a couple days, so we'll be having a lot of traffic coming in for the next two months, because we will be assisting our taxpayers with appeals, and we also are assisting our taxpayers with exemption applications. The renewal forms for the senior freeze renewals have not been mailed by the Cook County Assessor yet, but they should be going out within the next week or so. But there is forms available for first-time homeowner exemptions and first-time senior exemptions, so we've been calling people who've been calling us all year long about those exemptions, trying to get them in before the, the run on the senior freeze exemption comes in. So, once the seniors get that renewal application, they, they come in right away. So, we'll just be prepared for a busy couple of months here, and, and that's, that's all that I have to report at this time.
Very good. Any questions?
Assistant Sidkowitz, what was the deadline for submitting the...
April 18th.
April 18th. Thank you. About how many appeals do you do?
Um, we, let's see, so, so this will be the third year of the reassessment, so it'll be the least amount, because by now, we should, we're expecting about 600 appeals.
600 appeals, just for our town?
Yes.
That's a lot.
Yeah, it is.
And what's the success rate, do we know? Like, is it, they're not all gonna get it?
So, um, at this point in time, because it is the third year of the reassessment, and it appears that both the assessor's office and the Board of Review, they seem to be not making adjustments as much as they used to. They're gathering their data from a bigger set, and, so they're looking at bigger numbers now, and, so, so we're not seeing as much reductions as we have in the past. In the past, this, by this time, the assessor's office, you really have to have, you really have to show that you're being over-assessed at this point in time to get a reduction. The Board of Review is usually a little bit more generous, so, you know, we'll probably see maybe 30% of the people who appeal with the assessor's office at this point in time, because we really do try and put it into perspective for people. If they've been appealing and they already got a reduction in the first and second year by this point in time, not gonna get it.
Not gonna get it.
But, it's their right as a taxpayer to file an appeal, and we want them to understand that, we appreciate that right, and we want to support them. If it makes them feel better...
Yeah.
We, we help them. You know, we don't turn anyone away, but we just want to put it into perspective for them, of what to expect.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Fran.
You're welcome.
Okay, trustees' reports. Trustee Carroll, do you have anything for us to say?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee DeCostela?
Thank you, Supervisor, no report.
Thank you. Trustee Heilinbach?
Hi, good evening, fellow trustees and supervisor. The mental health report, I want you to, you know, you get these reports just about every month. I want you to pay close attention to the consultant's report. Every year, our consultant, Dr. Joe Tratiani, gives a report. He gives about, like, in this past month was the annual budget addressed by Governor Pritzker, but he also has other articles that he posts. Take a look at those. Most health, mental health crisis services do not increase following the launch of 988. 988 was a program, if you remember, that the federal government and the state put together so that they could ease up on first responders if possible and dispatch a social worker to help. From the start, this program was a failure, from the start, because the state didn't put together a couple of people that didn't know what they were doing, and they didn't include the police department, so now the police department doesn't wanna, didn't wanna get involved. So, they had a 3% call rate, and of that 3%, 2% of those calls went to different states. The program is going to fold, more than likely, and it's going to fold because they're running out of funding. So, again, you know, funding went, if they would have talked to police officers, or Dr. Tratiani, or even myself, when I read the program, I, I could see it was doomed from the beginning, so. It's a shame, it's a shame, because we still have a mental health crisis out there. In other news, we are working on our budget. We had a couple of budget meetings, and we're moving towards that. We're going to have our Health and Wellness Fair, I believe we're gonna go in October, we're gonna move it up to the fall, instead of piggybacking on, you know, we're bumping into North Riverside and so on and so forth, so. It looks like we will be having that in the fall. That will be in North Riverside again, they are more than accommodating to us, I appreciate it, I really do. But, again, read those articles that Dr. Tratiani puts in there. He works hard on his report, and those articles are fascinating, fascinating, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
I do, please.
Sure.
Is there an alternative to that?
Unless you got funding, and they had funding, and it's gone.
It was wasted.
It's gone. Don't know where it went.
So, there's, so there's, there's obviously still a crisis out there, and...
Oh, there's, there's going to be a crisis, and it overwhelms the first responders, our police and fire department. I'm sure Director Buckley, if he was here tonight, would say, "Yeah, it's a problem, we have a big problem." Also, one other thing, if I may, Supervisor. I, I have talked to pillars, mental health. If there is going to be a crisis or a situation, an emergency, we are going to set up a program where they will have crisis counselors ready to go for us, or for the village, or for the township. We had that in the past, but I wanted, I want a proposal in writing, so we can give it off to our local police departments, fire departments that we service, so they know what the plan is, what they, who they have to call, how it works. So, we are working on that also.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's nothing else, then we will move on to unfinished business, and as I mentioned, I have another draft. I can tell you right off the bat that on page two, it was my handwriting that made it impossible for the transcriber to do, but at the bottom of the page, under 1900 and 1905, that should read 400,000 on the 1933,000, that, that 300,000 on, on the equipment. So, I've increased that a bit, so that'll change, the bottom line on that page will come to 1,173,820. And as I said, there's, I keep tweaking and keep finding things that either we don't need so much, or we need a little bit more as we run to the end of this fiscal year. If you have any questions, please reach out, and also, if you have any inspirational thoughts on any of this, just contact me, and I will research and adjust accordingly. Okay? That's all I have on the, on that. Under new business, we have a visitor today, the Lions Club Chicken Dinner. They are looking to use compostable plates, and, and Mr. Finn had reached out to me to see if he could address the board about that. Thank you. Please introduce yourself first, and then we'll go on from there.
Right, I'm Bob Finn, my wife Judy and I live at 237 Black Hawk. First of all, thanks for letting me come and speak about the chicken dinner, and also thanks for all your commitment of time to the township board, I appreciate it. So, I did wanna just talk a little bit about the chicken dinner. This year, we are going to introduce compostable plates, and, you know, we're, we're only gonna do the dinner plates, we're not replacing all the other items that end up in the garbage, so we're just sorta sticking our toe in the water on, on this whole thing. So, the, the three things I wanted to talk to you tonight about is just introduce you to the, to what we're planning on doing, seeing if you had any questions on the whole process, and then also just letting you know that there's definitely a trend in larger gatherings for more compostable items, so something to think about as, as time moves on. So, our process for this whole thing, again, people are gonna get their chicken dinner on these plates, go ahead, eat it, use regular plastic silverware, or whatever you wanna call it, and then these plates will be put into five-gallon buckets, and we will take them over to Riverside Foods. They, Peter already does composting over there, so he's agreed to take this to, or to have Waste Knot come and pick it up. Now, when I say put these in the five-gallon buckets, they'll be able to place the plates in there, along with chicken bones, corn, potatoes, any of the leftover food, and any of the paper products can go into there, so. Let me see what, what else I've got here. So, again, I think a key point is, we still will need the maintenance person that comes and assists us on the garbage side, because we're still gonna be producing garbage, maybe there's other items he gets, gets involved in, but we definitely still need, need him. So, the reason that we're, we're going to this is twofold, we just wanna reduce what's going into landfill, landfills, and we wanna educate people that are coming there and let them know about the composting and what options are available.
Very good.
So...
Are those kinds of dishes available in other kinds of shapes and sizes as well?
Yes, oh yeah.
And where do you source them from?
Well, Riverside has a pickup service from the company Waste Knot.
Right.
Okay, my wife and I, Judy, subscribe to that, and they, they can provide plates.
Oh.
I think Judy said now Jewel also has some plates, you know, it depends on whether you're gonna shop for price or, or shop for how it looks, it determines what you're gonna, you're gonna pay for it, but you can get them online too, and, you know, get a little better, better price on it, so.
But these are more biodegradable than, say, the paper versions, the...
Yes, and most of the, most of the paper versions, you know, have some kind of plastic coating on them, and, you know, one of the problems with the regular paper products with the plastic coating and all the food going into a landfill is, it gets pushed in the ground, it doesn't really break down, and it, it produces methane in that environment. And, you know, I was looking earlier, most of that food that's in a garbage truck ends up, the closest it ends up is Joliet. A lot of it ends up either even farther away, some of it down in Indiana, where the, where the actual landfill is. So, the Waste Knot company is, is in Chicago, and they just do all their composting at that, that facility there. So, I'm, I have no connection with Waste Knot, that's the only company I'm familiar with.
Okay, thank you. Could we have a feel for those?
Yes, and, you know, the other thing I wanted to show you too is, so this just sort of gives you an idea of what can be composted and what, what can't be composted.
Thank you. Sturdy?
So, it's all basically food, food waste?
Like, well, so...
No, no metals, no glass.
That's a big one at our house.
We don't have a home for something that's...
Well, it's a, it's a process, so I, I don't know all the details of it, they were going to Waste Knot site, which I did a year ago or so, but I don't remember the details, but I think there's, there's heat involved in it that speeds the process up. I don't know how long it takes, I think it's relatively short, certainly much further than what's happened in the last...
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Absolutely a great idea, and, and it's a sturdy plate, I'm kinda shocked by that.
Yes, it's, I think, right, right now, it's much sturdier than you...
A paper plate, sure.
Mostly.
Yeah, I think that's great.
I have a question, approximately how many dinners will you be serving on that plate, on those plates?
Well, we have, you know, I'm still trying to get a number on that.
Sure.
So, we, in the last few years, we seem to have more takeouts, and right now, we're probably not gonna do anything with the takeout.
Okay.
We could have compostable takeouts, but the thing is, if people don't have composting at their house...
Then it's a waste.
It's just gonna end up in the garbage anyway. So, we're probably not gonna do the takeout.
Sure.
I think in-house, you know, we're, we're probably gonna have somewhere around 200 meals in-house. Now, the thing is, if we get to where we filled up all our five-gallon buckets...
Right.
And we're still getting more food, then, then at that point, the compostable plates will probably end up going into regular garbage.
Okay.
So, just so we manage the whole thing. So, this year, you know, it's a bit of a trial and error, just trying to understand numbers.
It's a well-worth trial and error.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
It's great.
We appreciate it.
Is there, is there anything that we would need to do different on our end?
No, I don't believe so. Again, I just wanted to, if you had any concerns or anything, we wanted to make sure we, we had an opportunity to address those, and also, I mean, you, you always provide the maintenance person, just to make sure that, you know, we don't, we definitely still need his, his support, so.
Are you using five-gallon buckets just out of ease, or is there something that could be used differently?
Um, mainly just because we've gotta, we gotta take them from here and get them over to Riverside Foods, and that's just a good, relatively convenient size, size. You know, the five-gallon buckets, that's basically what we use with Waste Knot. Peter has a 30-gallon bucket that he uses, they, we have covers for them, so it's just fairly easy to, to work with that.
More manageable.
You may find, you know, I thought about maybe just going like with the, with the larger garbage can, it's just harder to, harder to transport, harder to get them down in the car, get them to the car, get them over to Riverside Foods.
Okay.
I mean, if you have some ideas on it, I'm open to ideas.
You're signed in there, correct?
Yes.
Is there a contact on there?
I can add my email.
Yeah, or, yeah, that's fine, if I can get your information, please.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll definitely add that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
It's a pleasure.
My pleasure.
All right, next up is the, you have the proposed agenda for the annual town meeting, and, as I said, it's just very standard with, mostly just with reports, so I would ask for a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented, do I hear a second?
Master, give it.
Motion by, sorry, trustee DeCostela beat you to it. I have a motion... Motion by trustee Carroll, seconded by trustee DeCostela, to approve the proposed Riverside Township Annual Town Meeting agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. And, you also have there the notice that will be posted and published for the annual town meeting, just for your information. And then, as we've mentioned a couple of times tonight, the, the movement to eliminate townships is alive and well, and it was recommended that perhaps we approve a resolution, and so I will read the resolution that I propose we pass this evening. Committing to maintaining township services and opposing legislation consolidating or eliminating townships in Illinois. Whereas Governor JB Pritzker in his budgetary address to the Illinois State Legislature included a budget initiative to reduce and eliminate townships, and whereas research shows that it would cost far more for another government to provide the same level of services that townships provide, and whereas the township government is the most efficient unit of local government and has the lowest number of full-time employees, and whereas township government has the lowest debt, and whereas township government has the lowest expense per capita, and whereas townships account for only around 2% of property tax bills statewide, and this, this proposal will not solve the property tax problem in Illinois, and whereas Illinois townships manage 72,000 miles of roads compared to IDOT and counties, and whereas townships provide vital services to the most vulnerable people in the state at a time when those services are most needed, and whereas state statute already provides... And whereas state statute already provides processes involving public input from communities to consider consolidation or elimination. Now therefore be it resolved by the Riverside Township Board of Cook County that this, that it is committed to opposing any township consolidation and elimination legislation. And furthermore, the Riverside Township Board of Cook County hereby resolves to continue its commitment to maintaining essential, essential social services in Riverside Township, including general assistance, emergency assistance, food pantry, nurse's closet, a mental health board, senior health and welfare services, community organization and township resident use of town hall facilities, and community partnerships to provide residents with services within the township's statutory powers that the township could not provide alone. All ordinances or resolutions or part thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. This resolution will be in full force and effect from and after the date of adoption this 11th day of March of 2025.
I'll move.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion by Trustee Heilandbach, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to, uh, pass this resolution by the Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion?
Can we get copies to circulate?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that would be effective, yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. And then, um, for your information, there is more, more detail for you to share with people as well, um, that was provided by, um, Toy. Okay. Then we are down to approval of warrants.
I would like to make a motion, uh, and would move that the Board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant dated March 2025 in the amount of $13,630.57, as presented to this Board today, the 11th of March 2025.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Carroll, seconded by Trustee DeCostela, to approve the general warrant for March of 2025 in the total amount of $13,630.57. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Heilandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried.
I have a second, uh, motion, uh, that the Board ratify and authorize the payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant dated March 2025 in the amount of $1,856.32. The payroll warrant dated March 2025 in the amount of $19,808.39. The health warrant dated March 2025 in the amount of $6,421.52. The community partnership warrant dated March 2025 in the amount of $26,500. The general assistance warrant dated March 2025 in the amount of $9,629.89. The township radio players warrant, also dated March 2025 in the amount of $180. And finally, the food pantry warrant dated March 2025 in the amount of $1,180.37. All of the above is presented to the Board today, the 11th of March 2025.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Heilandbach, moved by Trustee Carroll. Then we have a motion to approve the following warrants in the following amounts, all for March 2025. And those are: utility warrant in the amount of $1,856.32. The payroll warrant in the amount of $19,808.39. The health warrant in the amount of $6,421.52. The community partnership warrant in the amount of $26,500. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $9,629.89. The township radio players warrant in the amount of $180. The food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,180.37. Are there any questions or discussion? I do have one thing. If you notice that the health warrant is exceptionally high this month, it is because inadvertently the, uh, checks for the, the life insurance and the health insurance last month were put in the wrong envelopes. Both parties managed to, uh, deposit and cash the full amounts, so we have already received the life insurance, which, you know, they were overpaid by $3,000 or something. We did get their refund already. But I couldn't believe that banks just ignored who it was made out to.
It's all automated, I think.
Yes, it is. It is. So... So this will be reflected, you know, we won't have overpaid in the long run. Anyway, we have a motion and a second on all of that, and no further discussion, it looks like. So Clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Heilandbach.
Yes.